Good afternoon, welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Board Meeting and I'm gonna ask the diocese to introduce.
Kristi Rishel Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey Clerk to the Board.
Staffing Summer Odumis Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Jeff Aludo County Administrator.
Charlie Anis Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Welcome everyone. We start our meetings with prayer and silent prayer, then we follow it with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we have a silent prayer at this time. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, now we will get into public comments and I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second?
Yes.
Yes.
Summer Odumis.
Public comments, do we have any on Zoom? Okay, we've got quite a few here, so we'll get started. Michael Green. Did I say it right? There's a lot of laughter going on over there. Welcome, you have the floor for two minutes.
So I don't get to talk much at home, so that's why. But some reason I'm here, my name is Michael Green. I'm a resident of Cincinnati, I'm a lifelong resident of Cincinnati, with the exception of the thirty years that I've been in the military. So I'm here on behalf of supporting Hillcrest because, you know, really, I just think it's important. I grew up in that community, I've been a part of that community, I grew up in Bonnie Hill Rose Line, and a lot of the kids that end up there are from those communities. So I took some notes here, so that I'll be brief. Couple of things, Hillcrest has a scholarship fund, so back away from that a little, a second. They're, they graduate students. For a lot of the residents that go through Hillcrest, they won't have an opportunity, they'll have an opportunity, but they won't take the opportunity to graduate. Education being a great equalizer in our society, I feel it's important that they get an education. So they have a scholarship fund, staff contribute to that, contributions from the company, so that way when students finish there, they can go to college, get into college. Their contributions to community, trying to get them involved in the community, I think that's really important. The fact that they've intentionally integrated trauma, trauma-informed principles into a lot of what they do, I think that's just phenomenal. So coming from a military background, I've deployed eight times, I've lost soldiers, I've lost Marines, a combination of both, the trauma that comes home with them, it stays with them. So the fact that Hillcrest is recognizing that a lot of these students are coming from trauma backgrounds, from the product of their background, and it's influencing the decisions that they make going forward, they're addressing that, so that hopefully we can put more productive members of society back into society. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Keisha Smith. If I say your name wrong, please correct me, I'm sorry.
Hello everyone. I'm here on behalf of Hillcrest. I do have a little speech that I put together. Good afternoon, my name is Keisha Smith, I am currently a unit manager at Hillcrest Academy. I applied to work there two years ago because I truly believe in the program. However, I'm here today to speak more personally. My son James Smith attended Hillcrest Academy back in 2016. Prior to placement at Hillcrest Academy, James was ordered to a Braxis. He successfully completed a Braxis and returned home. However, he reoffended within months. This is what led to his second placement at Hillcrest Academy. Just like a Braxis, he was able to successfully complete the program Hillcrest Academy. However, he did not, he did not reoffend upon discharge from Hillcrest, and this is how I knew that he had truly changed. As I reflect on my own experience, I would like to share some of the main reasons that Hillcrest Academy must be preserved as a local resource. One, Hillcrest Academy is in the community. I was able to attend every family therapy session, every probation meeting, every parent focus group, I even completed the armed groups twice because I found they were so helpful. Every sports game I was there, every weekend visitation, I dropped everything anytime Hillcrest Academy staff called me to ask me to support him. I was able to do all this because the program is local and within ten minutes from my home. Two, I was encouraged to be part of my son's treatment plan at Hillcrest Academy. I created and collaborated relationships with the staff members that supported me as a mother and James as a young man. The program understands the importance of these connections. Honestly, I can't even remember some of the names of the Braxis staff members. Because of my involvement, I was able to learn and practice new skills and to reinforce James when he used new coping strategies during home passes, and after he returned home, this is where I witnessed the most change in him. That reasons are just one of the reasons why I applied to Hillcrest Academy. I believed then, and I continue to believe today, in the mention of the program as a frontline staff member at Hillcrest Academy. I can also attest to the fact that it is, that it is safe and it is a nurturing environment. The incident that happened was devastating, but it did not widespread. As the mother of a former student, it is imperative that you avoid shutting down this local resource that other mothers can benefit from, and thank you for listening to me today.
Brent Billingsley.
How's everybody doing? Y'all looking fantastic up there by the way, y'all looking clean, looking good, like them pearls, let's go. So I didn't have anything prepared, all I can tell you is that I'm an artist first of all, and I'm here in Cincinnati, and I'm busy, I do a lot, because that's what God has given me, is a purpose to serve, and to serve youth and to serve communities. That's my goal, that's my passion, that's my objective, and I do so with urgency. And Hillcrest, I know is good soil. I have done projects with them for the last year, they were with me when I started my I'm Listening Program, which is a therapeutic artistic engagement program involving youth and Cincinnati police officers. So they were there with me from day one, 2022 when we started, we did huge murals, they were part of some of the stuff I've done with the Red, some of the stuff I do with Children's Hospital, where I go, they are not far behind me. And we started building a relationship. So for me, this is personal. For me, I feel as if the charge I've been given to sow unto the seeds of these young men is important for me, and I wouldn't, I can't think about not having that responsibility because I feel like it is a blessing, it is a responsibility, and I, and I take it very, very seriously. I feel like they have a phenomenal foundation, I feel like when they show up, they do so with, with pride and with eagerness, and they are worth everything that we have to offer, if that makes sense. So I thank you for your time, y'all have a blessed everything.
Thank you, and I just want to take this time too to thank you, Brent, for all the things that you have been doing artistically throughout, not just our county, but throughout the state, and what you do with our young people, and great artists, thank you. James Smith. James not here? Can I read the little, the last, is it Turner? Turner, I'm so sorry, what's the first name? Constance, I'm sorry, Constance Turner.
So good afternoon, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Hillcrest. Hillcrest Academy is much more than a residential placement, more than a school, it is an opportunity, an opportunity that is much needed in this community. As principal, I am proud to say that as of June twenty-second next week, we can claim that seventy-seven young men have obtained their high school diploma during our tenure. They have been exposed to numerous opportunities for certifications, vocations, participating in seasonal athletics, as well as every last one of them being CPR and first aid certified. Some of our graduates have even been enrolled and attended Cincinnati State while awaiting discharge. I do have a document, if I am permitted, just a single sheet to give you all.
Please give it to the clerk and she will, you want to keep speaking because your time, your clock is ticking, but soon as you get done, you can give it to.
The document that I want to present to you, it outlines many of our accomplishments, but what it doesn't say is the phenomenal relationships that are formed, how many teachers and staff have provided the needed modeling, social skill practice, and wisdom needed to help these young men integrate back into the community. We need your commitment to Hillcrest to continue allowing us to do what we do best, and that is to serve. And I want to add, because I do have thirty seconds left, like Mr. Billings, and I've known him for quite some time as well, is I'm extremely passionate about what I do. Education is something that is very important to me, and I found that in my experience at Hillcrest, just being a great example, a model, sometimes I have to show that motherly wisdom and engaging them, but I believe the opportunity to help them to grow and prepare them for the community is the greatest thing I can do to serve, thank you.
Principal Turner. We will make sure each of us have that. Thank you so much. Brittany Bowman. Did I say it right, or is it Bowman? Bowman?
Good afternoon, I am Brittany Bowman. I am very proud to serve as the Program Director at Hillcrest Academy. I was initially hired by Right of Passage nine years ago as an intern in the Case Management Department, and then ascended the ranks because I fell in love with the mission of Hillcrest Academy. In 2020, I was promoted to Program Director. I remain committed to serving this community with integrity and to improve the lives of youth. I am the one who self-reported the incident when it happened in late April, immediately terminated the staff member in question, and followed all protocols to ensure that each and every student on campus was safe. Furthermore, I have openly and transparently cooperated with all aspects of the investigation. I take this responsibility very seriously, and prior to this incident, our program operated with a flawless record. To learn that our contract has been canceled after eleven years as a partner to Hamilton County is absolutely devastating to say the least. So far, the court has largely refused to communicate with me, and they have not shared any other specific concerns beyond this incident. This decision was made very quickly, without any input from key stakeholders, without careful consideration of the impact on other service providers and the continuum of care, and without thoughtful planning to transition and maintain the physical space. The buildings alone are now quite dated and require considerable upkeep. Leaving the campus to sit empty, even if it's just for a few short months, leaves the program very vulnerable on a number of levels. We have a meeting scheduled next week with the court and JFS representatives. I remain hopeful that all of the key stakeholders will attend and that our discussion will be productive. As our county commissioners, you need to pay attention as well and ask questions. Please do not allow Hillcrest Academy to close, even if Right of Passage is not selected as the next operator. As you can see, it takes a village to run a program like Hillcrest Academy. We have a petition with more than a thousand signatures from people who support the idea that Hillcrest Academy should remain open. Thank you for allowing me to advocate for Hillcrest.
Thank you very much. Amy Dewell?
Good afternoon, I'm Amy Dewell and I serve currently as.
Can you bring your mic down so they can.
Yeah, we're too short. My name is Amy Dewell and I serve as the Clinical Supervisor at Hillcrest Academy, and I would like to share just a small part of my story and to explain why I advocate so strongly for Hillcrest Academy today. I have worked in the juvenile justice system here in Hamilton County for over twenty years, ten of those years being with juvenile court. My first position after completing my undergraduate degree was at Hillcrest Academy, when it was operated by juvenile court under Judge Hendon and Judge Lips. Since then, I've earned two graduate degrees and have held positions within juvenile court, Braxis, and Lighthouse Community, Lighthouse Youth Services in the community. In short, I'm passionate about working with youth. Education and treatment services are the cornerstone of our program at Hillcrest Academy. Although the model has evolved over time, what is offered today is evidence-based, holistic, and trauma-focused. We also created opportunities to allow the kids to be kids, and I say that again, kids. We allow them opportunity to play sports, have water balloon fights, draw, paint, cook, be silly, and have fun without wondering where their next meal will come from or what community violence they may be encountering out in the community. We all know the challenges when students return to their neighborhoods. However, Hillcrest Academy proactively prepares students for discharge. As the Clinical Supervisor, I spend most of my time strengthening family relationships. I help parents and caregivers develop new tools and establish rules and consequences to support behavioral change. Students are required to complete several home passes to practice the new skills that they are learning while in the program. This also allows therapists to continue to work on family interventions. As such, the value of a local program cannot be understated. Please allow us to keep working with youth and their families to strengthen our local community, and thank you for allowing me to speak and advocate for Hillcrest Academy.
Thank you. Sarah Adams.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners, my name is Sarah. In a few moments, you'll hear from my mother, Dr. Paula Smith. I am here today because I have an obligation as a community member to stand up for other youth who require services and support. My family has been involved at Hillcrest Academy for as long as I can remember. For many years, I was convinced that we ate so many holiday meals at Hillcrest Academy because my mom just doesn't like to cook. These experiences have taught me two very important lessons. First, it is impossible to truly feel gratitude and to confront the full extent of your own privilege until you walk a mile next to another youth who has had a much different start in life. Second, the kids placed at Hillcrest Academy are exactly that, kids, like me, and we have a lot more in common if we take time to connect. Our family has had many discussions about the incident that occurred at Hillcrest Academy. I am a junior at Anderson High School in the Forest Hill School District, and let's be honest, this kind of incident happens in schools across the country far more often than it should. I think that we need to ask ourselves some very tough questions. Would we make a snap decision to close a school if this incident had happened in an affluent neighborhood? Why is it so easy to minimize liability? Why is it so easy to minimize liability for ourselves and disrupt education when it involves undeserved youth? Why is it preferable to simply send kids elsewhere in the state or to Ohio DYS where we have less oversight of program fidelity? Even if the court intends to close Hillcrest Academy temporarily, their decision has many consequences. Please do your part to protect the continuum of care for youth in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to bring up your mother, Paula Smith.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Dr. Paula Smith, and I'm from the University of Cincinnati. I'm an associate professor and also the director of the Center for Justice in Communities. I'm recognized as a national expert in juvenile justice, but I'm also the mother of that amazing girl and another one who will speak in a moment. And as you've heard, my family has a longstanding connection to Hillcrest Academy. President Reese, I spoke with your chief of staff in May, and since this, that time, I have met with representatives from both the court and JFS. I'm very heartened to learn that they do intend to preserve Hillcrest Academy as part of our local continuum of care. However, it is still unclear whether or not they intend to find a path forward that avoids temporary closure of the program, and that is why I'm here today. In two minutes, I cannot possibly enumerate all of the reasons why it's preferable to keep Hillcrest open and occupied. For now, I will simply say that closure of Hillcrest Academy, even for a short period of time, creates discontinuity in our local continuum of care, and it will take several months at minimum to rebuild the capacity. I don't measure this time in months, I measure it by the number of youth and families who will not receive services at the appropriate level and in the least restrictive environment within our community, and that's further underscored by the many recent incidents of youth violence in our community. This is when we should be leaning in. I feel very strongly that the court and Rite of Passage have a mutual obligation to Hillcrest Academy, and so do you as county commissioners. I think that it will require each of you to nudge the court to ensure that an open-minded conversation happens next week and that a well-informed resolution is, is reached. And I'll say this to end, I have pledged the full support of my academic center at the university to help find a path forward that does not involve closure of the program, and I'm very confident with the support of the university and the broader community that we can find a path forward that really strengthens what we have in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Commissioner Reese, my name is Mia. My mom and I read how you are the first black woman to win city, state, and county elections in Hamilton County. Thank you for being a role model to girls of color. As a future voter, I am here today to ask you to keep Hillcrest open. Our community needs it, and the boys deserve our support. I'll be watching. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I would say, meeting adjourned. About to cry. Got to gather myself. Thank you, thank you. Wow, so cute. Uh, and our final speaker on this subject is Heidi Yocum. Did I say it right?
Hi, my name is Heidi Yocum. Thanks for taking my talk today. Um, I wanted to come to as a former Hillcrest Academy teacher and as a current teacher here in Hamilton County in our public schools, and just express my immense concern where we are looking at from a public standpoint, um, and a teacher's standpoint, um, in Cincinnati, the city of Cincinnati. Hillcrest Academy offers services that I think every public school would scream for. It is the complete continuum of social, emotional care, therapist onsite, staffed and available, um, and it incorporates not only the re-entry back into the community, but also giving the kids the skills to be prospects into our community and the workforce. This becomes more alarming to me, especially after recent activity in the last forty-eight hours. Vice Mayor Kearney states that there's a gap, a program that doesn't deal with just shooters. And Scotty Johnson states that we need to learn how to have difficult conversations. Those are both skills that are taught with cognitive-based therapies at Hillcrest Academy. The projection plan that was stated in the media this week was that the county tends or the city tends to have a plan in place by September of two thousand and twenty-three. As a public school teacher, this is alarming. September first is seventy-six days away, and Scotty Johnson said we're on a pace right now of two shootings per night. I've watched six of my kids get shot in the last two months. Schools will have returned by September first. In Hamilton County, there's projected of two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and forty-one students that are enrolled in fall of two thousand and twenty-three. There are not enough teachers, there are not enough therapists, counselors, administrators to help service these kids in education, let alone the trauma that they're coming in with. We are in an epidemic. Please help our kids.
Thank you. Thank you all who've come down. Mr. Ludo, did you want to add anything or?
Uh, no, uh, nothing specific to add, just to reflect, I think, as some of the speakers had said, I think there is a meeting next week of some of the stakeholders on this, Juvenile Court, JFS, the administration, and others. Um, and I'll certainly report back to the board at, at that, at that point in time on the, the status of the agreement, the license agreement, and the status of that, of that particular conversation.
All right, so we'll be watching once we get the report from the meeting. Thank you all for coming in and expressing this concern. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is Jeff Papel.
Good afternoon. I was, uh, came in to the building today to drop off my property taxes, and I'm glad to be able to report that you guys will be receiving more money from me based on my modest condo than you will from FC Cincinnati on their two hundred million dollar stadium, which then, of course, just means the rest of us have to pay more for the taxes they're not paying. But the real reason I wanted to come in was just to talk about the, the zoo tax levy issue that I've been reading about, about whether there's going to be an increase or not, whether we'll have more discounts for county residents. One thing I wanted to pitch is just a very underutilized funding option, and that's implementing a ticket tax or fee, separate from an admission fee, but where you just slap a, a dollar, dollar fifty, two dollar ticket tax onto every entry, and to let that be the first government dollar into the, the subsidy for the zoo. And what that does, then obviously you don't have to go to property taxpayers for as much money because the, the payers, the, the people using the zoo will be putting those first dollars in. And it's also a good way of getting contributions from outside the county. One thing I saw in the articles that were written about it is that approximately two-thirds of the visitors to the zoo are coming from outside Hamilton County, but a hundred percent of the property tax dollars going there are, are from those of us who still live in Hamilton County. So what a ticket tax does overall is you can, you can lower the overall tax rate because those would, would be the first government dollars in, and it's a key way of getting, of getting contribution from those outside the county. So I, I know every time a ticket tax comes up, it inevitably never happens, of course because the interests involved don't want it to happen, uh, but I hope that the commissioners will take a look at that idea and see if we can use that to help our, our county residents without cutting anything to the zoo.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next, uh, speaker is Jiva Brock? Is it Brook? Brock, okay. And I don't have my glasses, so it's not all your handwriting. Sorry. Welcome.
Hello. Um, just wanted to say thank you. Every time I come to one of these meetings, I'm reminded of the size and the impact and the difficulty of the projects and concerns and issues that are brought before you and how difficult and hard of a job you guys have to try to manage everything to the best of your ability for all citizens of Hamilton County. And part of that is you guys have done an excellent job with the due diligence to investigate the background and the understanding needed, uh, for the project that is the Brunt Spence Companion Bridge. And I wanted to take a moment to say thank you for taking time to examine this very difficult subject, to take the time to understand its impact, the problems that happen with, you know, both budget and time and engineering, and you guys have a very difficult job, and I want to appreciate, I want to say I appreciate the time you took to look at this particular issue, and thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is William Jackson III.
Yes, thank you for the floor, first of all. Like some of the speakers were saying before, uh, we have never had this unprecedented like gun violence that's going on in our communities and everywhere, all over the planet right now. We have let many people leave the country with fake IDs, as we've spoke about before, uh, starting with a guy named Timothy Schneider is his name, uh, Schneider Grimes and Fessler in Northern Kentucky. They advertise as a law firm. They've done identity fraud through a guy named Jonathan Smith of JDS Service Company, Inc. Who, um, I've watched, I've watched what's happened online. I'm not online. I've gotten off of these places like Facebook, and even though, even though you're not on these, by the way, they say there's, there's places, even Facebook collects your data, which should be illegal in this country. First of all, against, that should be a lawsuit against Mr. Zuckerberg and his wife. Started on the dorm room. And we're trying to subpoena people here to Hamilton County that Harvard wants to come called Dr. Lieber, who is a felony, uh, convicted felon now, and I've requested this through the courtroom, a branch birder, birthing, and Harvard wants it to happen, but we want to save face instead of, uh, going, uh, getting to the bottom of things, and that's why we have these secrets of, uh, uh, the Fauci-Trump era and, uh, Governor, um, DeWine, that was the person that shut down the whole entire country, all fifty states, he was the first to do it. And we, we're all scared to have these conversations that if we're not going to have them, we're not going to have humanity by the year three thousand. We're in the two thousands, early two thousands still. It's like Ted's pawn shops rolling the whole planet, and, uh, Paul Smith still can't tell the secrets of why, uh, they didn't have the Marshall, uh, why they didn't have a banquet at Xavier University when the Marshall plane went down. And I didn't go to my Cincinnati State graduation, and there's many people like Trantor that held me in an AWOL unit that say I didn't even graduate from high school here that are supposed to lift, uh, protection orders. We don't know who's ever dead anymore. It shouldn't be happening with LPAs, and people that are LPAs can't show up at Italian Fest when they're invited. They look at a picture of a girlfriend.
That's how you wrap up.
And a picture that, uh, they say a person that killed himself, I think it's a fictional character of Perry Leslie and kind of.
Okay. All right, we're going to, uh, go to our commissioners' comments and motions. Um, I'd like to start off with, uh, asking to, um, advance to by leave as part of my, and then I'll talk about where I've been, but I'd like to advance, um, by leave number By leave number two is, uh, by leave appointing, uh, my chief of staff. I've been operating with an interim chief of staff and an intern, um, in my office, and this, uh, person, Veda Stevens, has really stepped up and has done a great job in our office trying to manage basically a one person and now one and a half person. I got, I finally got a, uh, intern, uh, managing a lot of projects that we've got to manage, whether it's the five-one-three relief bus and some of the initiatives our office is running, and also running the activities, uh, as the president's office and coordinating. I'm very impressed with him and want to have a by leave today resolution making him my permanent chief of staff. It's one that comes with a diverse background, uh, his music, he's gotten a degree in performing music artist. I think people got to see him, they were shocked to see him sing. He's very excited that he is a proud graduate of Miami University. He's interned with Congresswoman Joyce Beatty up at the White House on the Hill and, uh, has done an excellent job with my office, and I would like to, um, make it official for him to go from interim to my permanent chief of staff. And, um, today is also his birthday, so I can't think of a better timing, uh, to do such a thing. And even though he is young and probably now will be the youngest, uh, ever chief of staff in the history of Hamilton County, um, it's not because he's young, but because he's ready, he's determined, uh, and he has earned it. So I'd like to advance item number two to make it official today, Veda Stevens as my chief of staff. Now, I'll open it up.
I'll second that motion. I assume that was a motion?
Yes.
Happy birthday, Veda. Uh, this is a nice birthday gift, I think, um, and we've had a, you know, the pleasure of working with you. Uh, you especially work with my chief of staff, Kevin Tai, and my other, um, public direct, public affairs director, Chris Harding, and myself. Um, so I appreciate the work that you've done and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Do you want me to call the room? Uh, yes. Commissioner Reese? Yes. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Absolutely. I appreciate it. I also would like to, as part of my motions, to advance by leave number six. Um, and I've, we've got a couple other by leaves. I'm gonna leave for my colleagues. I think each of you have one, one here, uh, that you have been working on, one is smaller bench grants, one is One Ohio, so I'll leave that for yours, but I'd like to advance, uh, item number six. We had a public, I won't say public here, and we had a staff meeting, and we certainly take what's happening with the next Spence Spence Bridge, uh, they call it the Companion Bridge, but it's a lot that goes to it, uh, because this original bridge caused a lot of harm, although it connected us with commerce and tourism, but there is a dark past. And I know that City Council under Scotty Johnson, Councilmember Scotty Johnson, and Mayor Avtav, and I believe Vice President, uh, Kearney and others had a press conference with an apology, and I will let them, uh, deal with that. I don't try to step on toes. But I will say, as someone who grew up, my grandmother lived in the West End, ten eighty-two Lynn Street. Uh, when we were there, my mother lived there, Barbara Howard, uh, Reese, you know about her singing career, but we were in the West End. Government cheese that used to be dropped off, the cheese and the milk. Uh, the incinerator, I used to have to go, we didn't have, put your trash out like you do now, and they come and pick up your trash, and then you got recycled bins, you didn't have that. We went around the corner to an incinerator. I was seven years old, taking garbage into an incinerator. Uh, so when you talk about environmental, we didn't have anybody to stand up for environmental justice. Uh, we talk about the Regal, I walked to the Regal, and they had a guy there, I would get their hot dogs, they got the best hot dogs ever, and I see our veteran Teresa Kent here, she remembers that. And the guy said, going out, and you get your popcorn, uh, they would put a napkin and a rubber band around it, and I know that wasn't the best sanitizing thing, um, and get your hot dogs and, 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 so this is very real. Uh, but not just that area, we had Buck Town, right across where we're going to build the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. That's why it's important to have equity on the banks, because Buck Town, you don't see anything about Buck Town, and that's where folks came over from slavery, our ancestors, they lived there. It was allowable because it was the flood plain, but once they determined how they could build garages on it, they ran us out of there to the West End, and now we've run out of the West End. So, uh, one of the things that I'm very committed to, uh, because a lot of my grandmother's not alive to hear, you know, this be rectified. My mother's not alive to see this be rectified, uh, but we've got a land issue of ownership, and we still are making mistakes because there is no black ownership of land down there. We can rent, we can't, over the line, we don't own a building. Ollie's Trolley, I'm gonna give y'all this because I know y'all say y'all want to correct the mistake. Ollie's Trolley right now, a black-owned business is trying to hold on, so we can show that we don't want to repeat the mistakes and let Ollie Trolley hold on to owning his building. So I'm gonna put that challenge out there for you guys. Go see him, get his story, and we can correct it so that Ollie Trolley doesn't get run out of town. We're gonna see what you really mean about it. Ollie's Trolley, one black-owned business hanging on in the West End, and from what I'm understanding, they want to force him into a rental deal. They keep forcing us into rentals, seven-year rentals, so they can raise. They keep forcing us into rentals, seven-year rentals, so they can raise the rates and run us out of town. So you can start with Ollie's Trolley. With that being said, we had a hearing here, because our board understands that this is a complex issue. We had ODOT come in, and we had, they presented, we are working hard, this board, along with our administrator and our, our head of engineering, to get on the board so that we can have some say. I'm not as big about running around talking about, we got jobs available, nobody's trying to apply for a job that doesn't come in until 2025. People need a job today, because bills are due today. So we don't want to just have some fluff, we want to make sure it's right. And so this board asked questions about MSD, because we own it, we've asked questions about inclusion, not just building, we want inclusion from the top, from the people that's doing the design, the people that's making the decision, all the way down to the workforce. So this resolution that we have, thanks to the testimonies that we heard from Bridge Forward, the testimony and paperwork we got from the organization who is demanding inclusion, we've put a resolution forward today that's byleave number six. I think it's inclusive of the things that Bridge Forward brought forward, it's inclusive of the commissioners, what we have said needs to be there, the inclusion piece is in here, we took out the word slums, because you put slum and ghetto and black people next to each other, not good. So we got that out of there. And so we made sure we were sensitive to the language. I want to thank Mr. Ludo for, we've asked him to put this together, and we inserted our input, and I just think we're at the right place to be on record. With that, I want to open up to Vice President Drehouse, because I know there are some things you also add.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that we're going to be passing this resolution today. We did have a pretty lengthy discussion in one of our staff meetings about how we can use this as an opportunity when it comes to the bridge redesign and the Companion Bridge to further the community by way of economic development, by way of innovation and optimal design. And so Bridge Forward has brought some ideas, ODOT obviously is at the table as well. You know, we, we were clear that we didn't want to increase cost or increase time, because time is of the essence when it comes to building the bridge. But we wanted to add, and I know Commissioner Reese, you added some language about inclusion, I too wanted to add some language to emphasize that the county, unlike other entities, have to, we have to be paying attention to the MSD impacts, to the stormwater impacts, because we hear a lot about this at the county commission, and we want to make sure that there are no negative impacts that would be attributed to a design of the bridge, but also look on the flip of that and say, are there opportunities to improve what we're doing by way of stormwater in particular? And maybe we put that lens on this project as well. And so there's some added language to the resolution to reflect that. And I also want to note that there's a lot in here about multimodal transportation, it's about moving cars, it's about moving bikes, it's about moving people, and we need to continue to think through that as we talk about transportation projects, I know the engineers in the room has been talking along these lines as well. So I'm happy to support the resolution as it stands, it's a little different than what the city passed, it's got the same tone to it, but we did add our own flavor, as we often do, to add some of our priorities to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. This is a major project, of course, which is expected to end in 2029. I'm satisfied with the resolution, it meets the needs of the board, it also expresses the voices of the community, so I'm in support of this.
I make a motion to approve byleave number six.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved, and now the city and the county together, united, have the resolution to move forward. Thank you, thank you all for being here. Okay, just a couple of things, I'll just say, I attended the CVG launch of British Airways, lunching, all three of us were there, and it was, boy, it was an affair. We got to put our hats on, it was so great, well done, and Candace has done a fantastic job over at the CBB, I mean CBG, in our international airport, and we are truly international. I understand since that time, we've got another international flight that has been added as well. So that puts us really in that space of international travel for business and tourism, and Candace and her team, Seth and others have just done a fabulous job over here at the airport. So we're just excited, it was just a great event, I'll tell you, it was just fantastic. Also, I chaired the Family and Children's Services First Council Meeting, and certainly that's an important committee, because we get money that comes in, and we've got to make sure those dollars are getting to the organizations that are servicing our youth. I was happy to see and hear about a lot of partnerships that they have, they partner with our 513 relief bus and a number of other entities, but it was great to hear the feedback. They said the 513 relief bus, that was one of their top feedbacks, as they've gotten surveys and people participating. So glad to see those joint ventures and participation together. And then I also was at a very important Free Store Food Bank ribbon cutting. I want to thank Kirk Ryberg, all three of us were there. He just does a phenomenal job, he and his team, and what they were able to do, I was out there when it was just the dirt, and to see it up, and, oh man, it's amazing facility, be able to serve more people, help more people. Free Store Food Bank, they're always out in the community partnering, we partner with them, getting people food. I remember when we had the Relief-a-thon, and three people called in on the Relief-a-thon, they didn't have any food, and before we could hang up the phone, food was delivered to their house. And that's just the kind of service and the kind of person Kirk Ryberg is and his team, and I just want to say congratulations to them, it was just phenomenal. Also, wanted to, happy to report the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, which has about 155 jobs that's been created through this project. I was able to attend a safety lunch with the workers, they were really are working hard getting this going. Everybody's always asking, are we gonna make it, are we gonna make it? And they're always like, why are they asking us this? We always make it, we're gonna make it. So we will be open for the grand open July 22nd, but it was just good to know that they've had a year, over a year of safety, no issues for the safety and have a safe workforce. So it was great being with them. Also, Jerry Springer Memorial Service was Friday, and at our Hamilton County Memorial Hall, and as stated before, knowing Jerry Springer since I was very little, he's family friend, but it was good to see so many people reunion-wise, people coming back, and it was a wonderful memorial, and it was very positive and upbeat, so was just happy to participate and be a part of that and be a part of the video celebrating him. And then today, we have the Juneteenth, our annual Juneteenth flag raising, and I know Commissioner Dumas will talk more about that, but I just wanted to say, as we go into the Juneteenth holiday, and it took a long time to get us to have a national holiday, I want to be reminded that the principles and the fight and what we're celebrating, we still struggle with today. They were struggling for ownership of land, we still have a long way to go, when you look at our, even downtown Cincinnati, lack of ownership, African-Americans owning buildings, owning the land, communities, getting their land, you know, we go in and we redo a neighborhood, but they lose the land ownership. We talk about Black History Month, it's under attack, nobody wants to, we need to not, not teach Black History Month, I mean, trying to wipe us out of history. When you hear about those kinds of things, homeownership, wealth gap, education gap, and we are still in the fight for, so yes, we are free, but are we, are we, do we have equal access, and that's what all of us are working towards. I want to say that this board on a lot of issues, we're working on, we got a long way to go, but we're still working hard, but there's some great things. We have a MBE and WBE program, I said 30 million, it's actually 70 million, Mr. Bale said. If we, we're on track, 70 million access to contracts. We put over $40 million in affordable housing, no, no, no board before this had done anything like that, because we understand that affordable housing is critical. These are the things that help people have equal access to the American dream. And we have so many other things down on the banks, we talked about that, a Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, a half acre out of 198 acres. So we are working on some of these things, but I just want people to know, as we celebrate this weekend, it's gonna be great, great celebrations, understanding that there is still work to be done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. I will start with the byleave number four, which is the One Ohio Region Two Recovery Foundation Governance Board. We have some changes to the board, and that is reflected in byleave number four. Primarily, they deal with the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. We lost Pat Tribby a number of months ago, and so Linda Gallagher is the interim president, and she will serve on the foundation board, and we're talking about the local board, obviously. Sam Keller had to step down as the small city mayor, and so we are appointing Mayor Aaron Brown from Forest Park to that position. And then the third one, we lost a person who had been serving as someone with lived experience, and so Sarah Coyne is going to now serve in that position. She is a member of our QRT team, and she also has lived experience, so we'll be happy to welcome her. We do have one vacancy left, it's the faith leader vacancy, and so when we get a candidate to fill that vacancy, that will come forward before the board as well. So I will make a motion to approve of byleave number four.
Second?
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. I've got, you've touched on a number of things, as you said, all three of us were kind of traveling around together last week and the week before. So there are a couple of things of note, though, that happened within the last couple of weeks. One was the OKI meeting. So at OKI, they were talking about agencies and governments that had gotten some money from OKI to further advance their EV chargers in the communities, and so Hamilton County got one of these grants, it was $33,000. And so we are moving, albeit rather slowly, but that is the nature of the process of implementing, or rather getting EVs into our fleet, making sure we've got charging stations available for those vehicles, and people on staff that know how to service those vehicles. And so we are getting there, and this is a step in the right direction, and so thank you to OKI for providing Hamilton County with that grant. I also attended the JFS Celebration of Dreams. This is the celebration, it happens every year, for kids that are in the care of JFS that graduate from high school. And it was a fantastic celebration, there was lots of enthusiasm in the room, and these kids were pretty stoked about the celebration, and it was just, it was so much fun. Michael Patton did a wonderful job of welcoming everyone into the room and then celebrating the achievements of these kids, so I want to congratulate all of them. Also went, on the same lines as education, there was an Adopt a Class event yesterday. Adopt a Class is 20 years old, and so on behalf of the county, I offered a proclamation in recognition of their anniversary. Bill Burwinkle is the founder of Adopt a Class, and this is a group that goes in and literally adopts a class in a school, primarily in Hamilton County, they've actually gone outside of Hamilton County recently, but then they teach the kids about industry or about insurance or manufacturing or being a first responder, I mean, the sponsors are from all different walks of life, and so they honored the organizations, the companies that have adopted classes and really helped these kids through their educational process. And so I was really pleased to represent the commission and provide the proclamation from all three of us. Also, the Pay Equity Learning Series finished out today, it was a three-program series for companies or organizations that wanted to adopt pay equity into their organization and didn't really know how to do it, right? They didn't have the strategies, they, they wanted to learn more, and so through the Commission on Women and Girls, the Women's Fund, and Eloquate, we put on, with, Duke sponsored it, we put on a pay equity series, and so Mary Mountie, of course, was instrumental in making this happen. 23 organizations participated and then made their way through the process. So we'll likely do this at least once a year to make sure that the companies and organizations in Hamilton County that want to participate in pay equity have the tools to do it and have the understanding of how to achieve that. And then lastly, I just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Dumas on the flag raising this morning for Juneteenth. We all three participated in that, but it was her brainchild a couple of years ago to do that ceremony, and it's always very meaningful, I think it's a constant reminder of the past, and I think a not very well-understood past when it comes to Juneteenth in particular, and what that, the significance of the day is and what happened in Texas, but also it's a reminder of what our roles are in moving forward. We reflect on the past, on the very troubled history of this country, but then remind ourselves that we are in a position to make some changes. And so it was really meaningful and very well-done flag raising, and so I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I go to Commissioner Dumas, we will be off on Monday. I was not on the board, and Commissioner Dumas brought this forward prior to it being a national holiday. And so everyone who's off on Monday, the board, you guys made the right decision and voted, voted for this holiday, and so at this time, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some exciting things going on, I can't hardly curb my enthusiasm, but I'll try. I want to draw your attention to byleave one, which deals with the resolution amending and restating authorization of monies for our small event grants. I could ask administration to go back if they could, Holly primarily was the one who went back to look. We had 16 applicants that had qualified for $10,000 outside of the city of Cincinnati, any events, festivals, parades, whatever they were doing, and they needed to be undergirded to make their event even more spectacular. We had 16, one of the applicants had not done their math really good, so we ended up with a little more money. And also, we were able to look at two other ones that actually do qualify. So we have 18 that qualify for small events, and which leads to a resolution where we would need $15,100, I believe, in addition to get all 18 in. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt byleave one.
Second?
Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. I will move forward, as you were saying, we've been very busy doing lots of things. And so I met with Trina Jackson, who is the Director of Reentry regarding the RISE Initiative. I don't know if my colleagues remember, we're doing so much work, but around the middle of May, I presented to this board a new initiative, RISE, which stands for Reentry Into Society and Employment. Instead, I would update both of you on more information that I may have. Trina met with me, and she said, there's a similar program that they are working with, with the women at the reformatory, and they, when they go in, they receive certificates, and when they come out, they can, they're eligible for jobs to make them more independent, and it's similar to what my effort would have been for this. We're looking at using this new initiative for Hamilton County, but not reinventing the wheel, but using some of the information that they're using to further this program. I'll make sure both of my colleagues get a copy of that. Also attended the British Airways, I kind of liked that fascinator kind of thing we wore, we have to have, maybe we'll just do something, and yeah. And it was just really exciting for British Airways, they had a few problems, I heard yesterday with the flight, not with the flight, but some luggage and stuff, and I'm sure Candace will get that all together with her staff. In addition, I attended the Free Store Food Bank ribbon cutting, and they're, as was said earlier, doing great work. I also attended the Best Point 159th Annual Dinner and Meeting, and it was a banquet where Children's Home and St. Joseph have combined their services to not duplicate services, but to work together, and they asked me to speak, to present some of the awards. I thanked them for the opportunity. And then just a couple of days ago, I went down to TQL, they were having the Midwest Regional Rally Up. It was about manufacturing, and they had several officials from the state of Ohio to talk about manufacturing and how we can make sure we don't miss the opportunity to increase our manufacturing in this area, it was a good meeting. And then the Juneteenth Flag Raising, which was mentioned earlier, was just awesome, we do it a little different every time, and as I spoke, I talked about the And as I spoke, I talked about the education or knowledge as power as it relates to, why is that flag? I often wondered, maybe I'm the only one, why is it not red, black and green like the African cultural flag? Why is it red, white and blue? And I found out that they wanted, the slaves wanted people to know they've always been Americans, even when they were enslaved. And so they wanted to be, have that flag reminiscent of the United States of America. It was never any different. It just happened to be under bondage. So, and a few other things I brought up, but I think people enjoyed the education of all of it. We will need to order more flags for the next, we don't have enough for every Hamilton County building, but we will make sure we have enough for next, next year. Just had a meeting with Sally Grimes and Rachel Stallins from ABC Activities Beyond the Classroom. They provide a lot of extracurricular mentoring tutoring programs and they work through JFS and also they focus on the Cincinnati Public School system, but they're looking at going beyond Cincinnati Public School and offering other young people opportunities because we know with all this violence going on, if we can keep our young people busy, productive, making some money, having some in their pocket, hopefully that violence will be decreased somewhat. And they are a conduit for our Beyond Your Imagination initiative I started in January with my colleagues, that they are the somewhat pass-through for that initiative. And I'm talking to them about if they can be helpful with our Inspire Initiative because we don't want to slow down when we distribute the monies, not directly to the groups. Our Inspire Initiative is an initiative where you can get up to $5,000 if, outside of the city of Cincinnati. If you have a group like a wrestling group, a boxing group, a dance team and you need registration fees, you need uniforms, we want to be able to undergird you once again with $5,000 to help you to go to a tournament. We thought, we knew we would get more than what was allocated. We allocated $250,000. We initially had about 50 applicants and now we have 123 applicants. So we had to close the application process down, but we want to be able to, to serve all of those who need, who needs that $5,000. They are in desperate need and we're trying. If you put in, you'll be finding out very soon if you were accepted and we're trying to get the money to you as quickly as we can. One final thing, Beyond Your Imagination is another initiative that I presented to the board in January and it's for foster kids, those that are also adopted, kinship care. And for some reason, if there's a concert coming and you're not accustomed to be able to have the money or you're a foster parent, doesn't have the money to take you, we thought, when I, when I came up with this idea, it's like, I want them to be able to go too. I don't want them to feel left out. You can't do everything, but if we can get some of these foster children to be able to go to some of the activities or some of the theaters or whatever it might be, that we work with them to, to make sure that they can go. And so I have an announcement. I made an announcement at the press conference about Taylor Swift was coming. I want to let people that are listening know that the county is not paying any of these, for these tickets. We know how much these tickets are. So I just wanted to make sure I did an update. And the other reason why I'm doing an update is those who may have been selected, you, I'll read it. I'll go on and read it. We were given a total, given a total of 120 tickets. 10 box seats for Friday, 10 box seats for Saturday, 50 standard seats for Friday and 50 standard seats for Saturday. A total of 71 individuals were submitted and the breakdown is as below. 52 entries were eligible, ages 14 and up, in the care of Job and Family Services. 17 entries were for youth under 14, all in our care. Two entries were for youth that were not in our care, so they were not eligible. With eligible entries and staff tickets, those working at the concert to distribute tickets, the total is 110 tickets. Now, what that says, looking back there, what that says is our community is invested in our youth and they, how important, and you're thinking about, where can I go to this concert?
I think they need some chaperones.
Right. And so we actually have 10 extra tickets. Our plan is to award those tickets to the 12 and 13-year-olds who entered, so they just missed, they missed the cutoff because we had 14. And now we're sending out emails, not myself, but JFS, today to the winners and we're asking that they all confirm by midnight Sunday, 6:18, that they will give us time, so that will give us time to follow up as needed and redistribute tickets using under 14 lists. If anyone is no longer able to attend or decides they don't want to go, when they learn the tickets are, are not, are non-transferable and we are passing out the tickets at the gate. So they'll let you know if you've received it and then you need to let them know if you want to be a part of this. So just really excited about it. It was just a, a, a brainchild of going to a concert and then we said, what about Taylor Swift? So nothing is impossible. So Beyond Your Imagination, you will be one of those persons going to this great concert. So I believe that will end my report, Madam Chair.
That's awesome.
Okay.
And just a reminder and disclaimer, don't call our offices. We don't know. Jobs and family services.
Right, right, right.
Okay, great job. Great job, commissioners. Doing a great job. We'll now go to our administrator, Mr. Lugo.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioners, you have gone, I don't have any other comments today, but you've gone through a couple of the by leaves already. I think I have two by leaves remaining. The first is by leave number three. This is, incorporates two budget adjustments. There's the, one is the transfer of some personnel funding within River City Corrections to non-personnel to support contracts related to food, cafeteria furniture, some HVAC improvements, et cetera. And the second adjustment within that same budget adjustment relates to transfers in our health and hospitalization state grants to cover personnel expenses for county employees funded out of those grants. So in the total, the budget adjustment is for $317,000. 157, that relates to the River City Corrections and 160 for the health and hospitalization grants and I recommend the board's approval.
Okay, anything on by leave three or five? Open it up. Did you introduce five?
I did not introduce five yet.
Oh, okay. You want to introduce five?
Sure, happy to. By Leave Five is a resolution accepting the Factfinders Report related to IU, the negotiations with IUOE Local 20, this is for the FMW Facility Maintenance Workers, one and two, HVAC techs and Maintenance Repair Workers, one and two. These relate to, this single Factfinders Report relates to two SERB cases, 2022 MED 091001 and SERB case 2022 MED 091002. Again, this resolution accepts the Factfinder Report and I recommend the board's approval.
Okay, I'm going to open it up. Vice President Drehouse, anything on by leave three or five?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
By Leave Five, I'd just like to thank all of those who are, who helped and mediate this process. It was a lot of hard work and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. I want clarification on by leave three because it mentions River City Corrections and this is one of these things when you learn with the Ohio Revised Code allows us to do and not to do. So can you, because we get questions all the time, can you, are you in charge of them or how is that possible? And now we've got something on the agenda.
So this is primarily state funding that comes through. So we, we oversee, we're the budgeting authority, so we oversee the, the formal transfer of money, et cetera, but these are funds that flow through us from the state.
We're a pass.
Correct.
Just want to make sure of that because people call us. I thought I was in charge. It's one of those ORC things.
Correct.
AKA the law from the state. Okay, I make a motion to approve by leave three and five.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Any other items, Mr. Lugo?
That would be it for the by leaves, yes.
Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda. We have our engineer here. Welcome.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to update you. We did have a meeting this morning with ODOT, KYTC, Federal Highway Administration and Bridge Forward as part of our continuing process to develop their, their ideas. They did submit a new modified alignment on Tuesday evening, so there really hasn't been time to review that. So again, as things are still in flux, I don't have an answer to your questions, but just wanted you to know, we continue to work on it and I am appreciative of your resolution today, kind of codifying where we want to go as a county with this project. So thank you for that.
To be, to be clear, ODOT provided the...
This is the Bridge Forward.
Okay.
Is continuing to, to fine-tune what they were proposing based on some comments from our previous meetings. So those were submitted to ODOT on Tuesday evening, so we really haven't had time to look at those yet to vet out what the...
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Sure. I've got a number of items today. The first five are all approval of contracts that we went out to bid on. Item number one is awarding the bid for the 2023 Resurfacing Project. These are for roads located in Anderson, Colrain, Crosby, Green and Springfield Townships. We opened the bids on April 27th. Our engineer's estimate was $4,642,000. The low bid was $4,551,388, which is just about 2% under the engineer's estimate. The funding will be $2 million from road and bridge funds, $2,154,827 from permissive auto tax, $220,631 from Crosby Township, $175,929 from the city of Wyoming. So we've partnered with a couple of different agencies on this one. Item number two is a bid award for the Simpson Avenue Roadway Project in Springfield Township. We opened bids on May 11th. The engineer's estimate was $506,000. The low bid was $495,312, Rack and Ballower Excavating Company, again, about 2% under the engineer's estimate. Funding is $292,644 from Sorda Infrastructure Funds and $202,668 from permissive auto funds. Item number three is the bid award for the 2023 Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program. We opened bids on May 4th. Dad's Bobcat Service was the low bidder. Engineer's estimate was $70,320 and the bid amount was $68,676. And those funds are from the road and bridge fund and then potential reimbursement from property owners. Item number four is the bid award on Mount Averno Road and Petretti Road in Delhi Township. We took bids on May 11th. Engineer's estimate was $2,112,000. The bid award was $2,140,000, so just a little bit over. The funding will come from $1,456,385 from the Sorda Transit Infrastructure Funds and the balance from county engineer's permissive auto funds. Item five is a bid award for our thermoplastic and epoxy pavement striping program in various townships. We took bids on May 4th for that. ANA Safety was a low bidder at $288,888, about 18% below our engineer's estimate. That also comes from the road and bridge fund. Okay, item number six is a resolution for the Loveland Barrow Road Bridge Sidewalk Repairs. This is to allow us to go out to bid for this. This is in Sims Township. The engineer's estimate is $935,000. We have an OPWC grant for $277,598, $365,335 out of permissive auto. Claremont County is contributing $225,000 and the city of Loveland is $67,067. And our, I believe our final item is item seven, is resolution authorizing of right-of-entry in agreement between Hamilton County and CTR Development for the installation of a bridge at 4040 Walton Creek Road. This will be a private bridge that is being built in the county right-of-way. This will be access to their property. The county does not install private bridges, so this is just an agreement to allow them to be within our right-of-way. And I would be glad to answer any questions on any of those items.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Vice President Drehouse, any questions?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
Just a couple of questions. The resurfacing schedule that you have, I know you have the schedule, are we halfway through that or are we just starting on the resurfacing?
This, this resurfacing, you may recall, we bid it out early in January. All our bids came in too high, so we had to re-bid it. So this is just starting this year's process at this point because we're pushing back by having to re-bid it.
Okay, and are you suggesting that all of these will be done like within the year?
Um, let's see. The resurfacing should be completed by November of this year, yes.
But the repair and replacement, that could be finished in a month or so.
Let's see, yeah, that, Simpson is completion November of this year. Sidewalk is September of this year. Mount Averno's November. The striping is October, so they should all be done by this, into this construction season. That is our intention.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Oh, yeah, okay. I make a motion to approve items one through seven.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lugo, Commission Administration?
Item number eight, Ms. Adams is not here today, so we're going to turn it over to Ms. Christman to walk through the ARPA-related contract related to child, childcare. Holly?
Thank you, Commissioner Adams and Commissioners. You may recall, the board authorized $1.8 million in our ARPA funding under workforce development to increase the number of childcare teachers, given the significant staffing shortages and the effect that these shortages have on our workforce. So we did issue an RFP and through that process, we are bringing forward today for your consideration an agreement with 4C for Children. 4C, through this funding, will develop programming to have a minimum of 100 new childcare development associates in Hamilton County to help with these shortages. So 4C will employ strategies such as marketing campaign, provision of training for new hires, reimbursement of newly hired to cover screening top costs, credentialing and funding for ongoing training. Funding will also include stipends and expense reimbursement to help remove barriers for folks that are starting to enter this field. So we do have Kim Ginn, Ginn here, Vice President of Program Operations with 4C, if there are any questions you may have or if she would like to provide any additional information. This agreement does run through May 31st of 2025 and as noted on the agenda, is $1.8 million.
Thank you. I would like you, if you want to say a word or two, childcare is so important to us, to this board. We know there's a number of things we've got to do, but this is a very important big step.
Yes. Once again, I'm Kim Ginn, Vice President of Program Operations of 4C for Children. Thank you so much for your commitment to childcare and the programs in Hamilton County. In February of 2023, we did a survey of the 313 center-based programs in Hamilton County and we have a 40% response rate and of those, 64% said that they could have additional classrooms opened if they had additional staff. And that results in about 832 childcare spaces that could be available for our working families of Hamilton County. So 4C has been very fortunate to be able to kind of kick this off in a very small way due to some funding from Cincinnati Preschool Promise. And we started in January and we currently have had 35 people sign an MOU that want to participate in the program and six of them have been employed in Hamilton County. So with this funding, over the next two years until May of 2025, we feel we can really make an impact in the childcare programs, which would then in turn help our Hamilton County families find childcare and be able to be employed and remain employed.
Awesome. How many, was this about? How many more teachers?
We're hoping 100 more, more teachers.
Vice President Drehouse?
Yeah, I'm really glad to see this coming forward.
Yeah, I'm really glad to see this coming forward. We've been working on this for a while, I believe. But I think we all understand that we will continue to have workforce challenges as long as we've got lack of access to childcare.
Yes.
It's one of the primary issues in the state of Ohio when it comes to getting people back to work that want to go back to work, especially post-COVID. People have made a variety of decisions about work-life and working at home and working part-time and all those kinds of things. But some people aren't working because they don't have access to childcare. So really grateful that 4C is here in this community and really gratefully for your partnership on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. We saw a need and we're trying to fill it. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to go to our consent agenda, but I'd like to advance item number 19 and then turn it back over to Mr. Ludo. Item number 19 is a resolution, amend the employment agreement of County Administrator Jeff Aludo. I'd like to make a motion to adopt unless you all have something else to say.
I'm happy to support this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Okay. Turn it back over to Mr. Ludo. You want to walk us through the rest of the consent agenda?
I'd be happy to, Commissioners. Item number nine is a budget adjustment. This includes a couple of different things. One is one of the engineers' projects. It was referenced, the Loveland Road Bridge project. There's also a community development allocation to a expansion at Lydia's House. But I did want to draw the board's attention to the fact that part of this budget resolution or budget adjustment relates to a partnership between the Mental Health Recovery Services Board, 3CDC, and I believe Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health. And this relate, the budget adjustment specifically is the acceptance of, of some funding provided by 3CDC to the Mental Health Recovery Services Board to put together a program to deal with those with severe and persistent mental illness and homeless challenges. So this gets at one of the things the board had been talking about over the past couple of months. Commissioner Reese, I think you had brought up the persistent homeless problem in the, specifically in the downtown area. And this is an effort on, on behalf of three of our partners to try to deal with that. And this, the budget adjustment specifically relates to the transfer or the acceptance of funding within Mental Health Recovery Services Board budget to, to help implement that program. So I want to draw the board's attention to that. Item number 10 is the bid awards and contracts authorized by the Purchasing Department for May. We have a resolution. Item number 11 is an agreement with Sims Township. This is for police protection services over three years for $4.453 million. This is the sheriff's provision of police protection services to Sims Township. Item number 12 is the, reflects the purchase of a Toyota Tacoma on behalf of the Soil and Water Conservation District for $41,900. Item number 13 is the rejection of a bid for sod replacement down at Pacor Stadium Practice Field. And I will just comment that that bid rejection relates to the fact that we're doing things a little bit differently down there now where we're, we're still bidding the sod out every year, but our stadium parking department in concert with the Bengals are using grow tarps now on the field to help advance the turf growing over the course of the year with the hope that turf can last more than one year. So at the appropriate time in the spring, they pull it up and see if they actually need to award the bid. And if they don't, they don't. So in this particular case, this has helped us avoid the expenditure fund for sod replacement for another year. Item number 14 relates to a contract for a security camera replacement at the Juvenile Court Youth Center for $416,990. Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing an award of an agreement for decommissioning of the data room on the ninth floor of this building, the Todd Portune Center, for $493,000. Item number 16 relates to an agreement or relates to the purchase of a Dodge Durango for $38,000 on behalf of the Sheriff's Department. We also have a, item number 17 for $37,300, a Ford Edge as a replacement vehicle in the Sheriff's Department. Item number 18, I know Nick Crossley is here today. This is a resolution endorsing, on behalf of EMA, endorsing the participation of county employees to assist with functions during a declared emergency. So making sure that if there is, is an emergency, a declared emergency, a not business-as-usual type event, that we can use county employees in appropriate ways to supplement their response to that emergency. We have item number 20, which is a resolution adjusting our vacation accrual policies related to the vaca, both vacation accrual and offering options for vacation buybacks for employees. We have several JFS items. We have the report of actions by the JFS Director is item 21. We have two agreements for foster care. Those are items 22 and 23 in your agenda for $100,000 and $600,000 respectively. We have the report of no objection of one liquor permit from the Sheriff's Office, the monthly investment report from the Treasurer, item 25. And we have the approval or the requested authorization for the travel of three employees from the Coroner's Office, one to Butlerville, Indiana, and two employees to Detroit, Michigan. And I believe, Commissioner, that brings me to the end of the consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I wanted to bring attention to item number nine. Not so much on the grant side of the mental health, but the taxpayers increased that levy. I don't know, do you know offhand how much that is for mental health?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I can certainly get that to you. But yes, there was.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have it? Okay. Please go forward. Sorry. What's the amount you get from the taxpayers, this last levy?
Oh, we got, we had an increase.
Yeah.
So it's 43 million, I believe, a year.
So 43 million per year?
Yes.
And the levy is for five years?
Five years.
Five years. Okay. My only thing, and it's not for today, I'd ask Mr. Ludo because I know you all had some change over, obviously, from the passing. Prior to that, that was a really tough decision. We wanted to increase mental health, but also, you know, the taxpayers. And I just wanted to make sure we had talked about some additional things through that levy. Because that's, you know, 40 million times five. And I appreciate, I know this is private, but I want to talk about what are we doing with the taxpayers? Because that's a tough thing, particularly now when the assessment's getting ready to come out on people's homes and those kind of things. And we support this issue. I know all of us do. But what I want to make sure is showing what else are we doing? And I didn't know what that is, obviously, with, your predecessor was very heavily known in the community and of course, well-respected. And now he's no longer with us. I wanted to have maybe even at the staff meeting, what are the new things? Because I said I would support it as long as we're going to do more. If we pay more, let me see more. The thing that I have some concerns about, and I was thinking, and not just, it's not good for you, but I told Mr. Ludo, is that we spent all this money, we vote on all this money, and I know that money can't solve everything, but I'm the kind of person, I need to see something. And it just breaks my heart that we increased this money and we got money from ARPA that we're putting toward homelessness. And, you know, I, I feel like I don't see anything. I don't see anybody. I need to see some people walking. I need to see somebody talking to somebody. I need to be able to refer somebody somewhere. I can't just walk past them and say, oh, after I'm upstairs, you know, it's not the Taj Mahal, but we're upstairs with millions that we're voting on. Then we get on the elevator, we go downstairs, and it seems to be a disconnect when we walk out them doors with the people. So for me, I'd ask Mr. Ludo, and it's not just on the mental health, why aren't I seeing somebody? I need to see some people walk around here with a t-shirt. I need to be able to send them to, hey, you need help. And then they say, well, these people don't want help. Well, you need to be down here anyway. If they don't want help, they asking me for help. So I want to make sure that whatever we're doing, I know this is a private money, but we got a lot of public money that should be able to cover some of these things. We will take the extra money, but I just want to be clear that the taxpayers of Hamilton County, through us putting an increase on there, which was a tough, you know, it was a tough decision to increase anything. And I just want to be able to, not just on paper, but I gotta, I need to see some people walking. I need to see some people. And I need to know who do I refer them to? If they, they walking up saying they need help, who do I, how do I get them some help?
So this is one, one collaboration, and this is funded in half by the Mental Health Board and some of the dollars that we did receive in our increase.
Okay.
This is a small team that is going to be set up for the business district downtown to deal with about 20 chronically homeless individuals. So you will see, this team is set up to really do a critical time intervention, which is a very intensive, out on the streets, getting engaged, getting the trust of these individuals, so we can gather them and get them into care, get them into housing. And so this is one of the initiatives. We'd be glad to come down and talk about the other initiatives because there was money that was identified, about 2.2 million above what we had that was identified. And we've put some of that in play for additional services in the system. We can definitely let you know.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And it's very helpful for you saying in this project here, that we're accepting a grant that mental health is putting in 50%.
Yes.
From the taxpayers. So it is a joint venture. So I appreciate, yeah, because I had an interaction. I'm like, well, who do I send the person to? How do I get them some help? They said, well, go call the police. I said, no, we can't call the police. This person needs help. But I didn't know where or how, or I'm just out there, you know, looking around.
Absolutely. Well, I can, we can definitely get you some tools and information. So you'll have some numbers to provide people information or where to send them.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate. Thank you for the clarification. I really appreciate you stepping forward. That's all I had on consent agenda. Vice President Drehouse?
I just want to highlight item number 11, which is the partnership between the county and sheriff in Sims Township. These are the agreements that we have for police protection out in the communities. And so it's, it's always good to see these kinds of partnership resolutions coming in front of us. So I, I want to thank the administration for continuing to work through these agreements. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Also, 11, I'd like to know, is that an increase of the monies or is that what it was last time or what?
I believe it is a slight increase because it would reflect the ongoing rates associated with the Sheriff's Office personnel. So at the very least, it would reflect the increase in, in wages associated with the patrol officers.
Could you let me know what the increase?
I can let you know the exact amount of the total contractual increase, though.
Thank you. And item 15, if you could explain to me, Jeff, the decommissioning project, I'm sure it has to do with data, I'm assuming. But that's a lot of money. And what is that?
Yeah. So, so the ninth floor of this building, at one point in time, goes back several years now, well before COVID, but used to be an entire IT room. Entire, almost the entire central, central portion of the ninth floor was a, was an IT room. So it has a ra, it has a raised floor, it has a drop ceiling, it has old specific fire extinguishing equipment in it, specific to a data room. And that data room, for the most part, has now been moved to another county facility, secure location, et cetera, over another facility. So we now need to decommission that so that we can utilize it for just traditional office space. So ripping all of the flooring out, the ceiling, decommissioning the fire suppression system, et cetera. So that's the, the reasoning for the larger dollar amounts, not just your normal renovation.
So we're gutting out that area. So we've had a RFP on that?
Yes, there was an invitation to bid, correct.
For that much for one floor to gut out?
Because of the specific nature of the, of the IT structure that was up there, yes.
I remember you, you just said that IT stuff was moved somewhere else.
So that, I'm sorry, the, so the IT equipment, like the servers and things like that, were all moved, but everything that that built, that that floor was set up for, like the raised ceiling, the conduit, the fire suppression system, all of that is still up there?
That just seems a lot to me for one floor to, to gut out. But I'm not a expert on it. But, and so all the RFPs that came through came back on close to this number, and this was the best one that we picked.
Yeah, I would, I, Jill Williams is on the, is on our Zoom. So I would, I don't have the, all the bids in front of me on this.
Sure.
So I might ask Jill if, if, if you would allow me, Commissioner, to ask Jill if there is a, if she has the bid awards on that. I just want to make sure that this, if this was not the lowest and best, that Jill could opine on, on the rationale for which one we went with. So, Kristy, I don't know if we have Jill on?
Yes, I'm on.
So Jill, could you speak to the ITB 043-23 on the decommissioning of the data center on the ninth floor?
Sure. Hello, Commissioners. There was only two vendors that bid on this, and the Alpha Construction of Indiana, who is the awarded vendor, they were the only one that bid on the base bid. The other one only bid on the alternates.
So they were, they were essentially the only bidder on the decommissioning project as, as scoped?
Correct.
Okay.
But it was within the budget of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Lastly, just a question for number 26. How many employees are in the coroner's office, would you say, Jeff? Do you know?
I hazard a guess that it's, it's in the neighborhood of 50 to 60, I believe.
That's good to know because I noticed almost every meeting, we come up with all this travel. I know they have to be certified. And I was, I don't know why, I just thought it was less than like...
At one point it was, and I can get you the exact number. At one point, it was more around 40. And we've been on a staffing plan, on a plan with them through the budget, which was part and parcel to the construction of the new facility out there to gradually increase the staffing out there. So I can get you the, the final, or the current number.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I make a motion to approve and accept for the records items number nine through 18 and items number 20 through 26. Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. I wish all the fathers out there, Happy Father's Day. So I'm just, yeah, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Any other business?
Do you have an exact session?
No, we do not.
We do not?
Anything you want to say?
Nothing. I have nothing.
Mr. Drehouse is very disappointed. We don't have the exact session.
I must say, I don't have the revised agenda in front of me. Well, I'm delighted by that. I do want to say, I know Nick Crossley is here, followed our lead with providing free period products in the restrooms at his facility. Thank you, Nick, for following our lead on that. Your employees will benefit.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Dumas, anything?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we know what to do ourselves, no exact session. All right. No further business. We are adjourned.
We got to make a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Okay, now we are adjourned.